At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, June 11th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to order. It brings us to the next item on the agenda here, which is roll call. Altav, Sharnell, Daniels, Hemma, Dee Lindell, G. Lindell, and Pid here. That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Dee Lindell and a second by Mr. Altav. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. It brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from May 14th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Got a motion by Dee Lindell and a second by Mr. Daniels. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. It brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone from the public who's here for something other than the Rob Bistro rezoning or variance? Seeing none, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which will be the public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the rezoning of Rob Bistro.
Thank you. I will just give a brief background of this. Patricia Green is the owner of Rob Bistro, which is on Cannon Street in the former Lawrence Meats Building. They are looking to expand. Their business has been growing as of recently and with the current zoning in the residential business district, an expansion of that building is not allowed because it's a light industrial use. So staff is recommending a rezone to I-1, which is limited industrial district, in order to accommodate the current use of the property, which is already a industrial use. And so they can expand the building to add a larger freezer unit at the, what would be the southeast corner of the property. So now I'll invite members of the public up and to comment or Commissioner comments as wanted.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak?
My name is Richard Malloy from 310 West Cannon Street. And I understand the business growing and all this, but I don't know if people realize the semis that are coming in there now to deliver and to receive. And I talk around and we hear about city or maybe doing Cannon Street and Third Street Bridge coming up here in the future and narrowing things up even tighter. I was just kind of wondering how, if we talk in business on the rise, how are we gonna accommodate for more bigger trucks and somebody's coming in? I mean, we got 14 kids living on the block now, under 10 years old, you know, so. And I've talked to a few other of my neighbors and they're kind of concerned about semi thing too, you know. Right now, they come in Cannon Street, they pull up Third Street, they back up to get in there and it can take some time. I mean, you could tell the ones that have been around versus the ones that haven't, but I just see that as a really safety issue. I mean, I've seen some interesting things happen, sitting in my yard while this goes on. You know, sometimes there's maybe four a week, sometimes there may be three, you know, sometimes there might be three there at one time. Sometimes they might be there early in the morning, one, two in the morning, and they decide to sit there until six, or seven when they open. Just little things like that that, I mean, all for the freezer thing, because right now I'm listening to a semi pointing towards me, so that's a good thing, but I just don't see a whole lot of room for growth there, where I think maybe something built out north into town, a cold storage unit there, then maybe small truck product from there into there and that's just a concern I got, that, you know, other than noise too, you know, but I just, I just don't see how we can keep letting trucks come through there like that, but, you know. So with that, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. So this is a preliminary drawing of what they're proposing here, so let's see what we've got here. We've got Cannon Street is running right here, and then the area they're using for parking is back here. This is the proposed freezer addition, approximately 45 feet by 30 feet and 20 feet, 20 feet tall, and it would be going right in where they're using as a parking lot now.
Does that answer your question?
How does the setback from the river figure?
So the shore land, which is, this is the, speaking about the variance now, the shore land overlay district requires a setback of 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark. Currently, the building would only be able to meet at mo, at, how do I want to say this? It would not be able to meet that 75 feet. We could go up to a 65-foot setback or possibly a little closer to that 75 foot, but it's not going to make that 75-foot setback. There was a variance that was approved back in 1995, I believe, for an expansion on the west side of the building, so over here, and you can see where that addition was done, and that needed a variance for the shore land setback also. So it has been, a precedent has been set for this building already, that the 65-foot setback is okay.
What about floodplain?
Yeah, it's, it would be, so for the floodplain, it would be the same sort of setbacks and everything, and then they would need to have, we would need proof of what's going to happen with, say, runoff soils, how excavation is going to be worked with and everything like that.
Evening. Jim Altav of County 17. I own the property on the other side of the river, on the other side of the bridge, the townhouse project that we're putting up there. I'm, you know, just kind of thinking about the things, you know, we had to setback from the river, that sort of thing. The whole reason, the only reason I put that property, that townhouse is there was because of that setting overlooking the river. Oops. If this is just going to be, you know, some storage, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Malloy that here we're going to have trucks coming in and out of there, blocking that, blocking that bridge. Obviously, those trucks aren't going to go across that bridge, but, I mean, you know, backing in and out of there. The thing would concern me, and I don't, maybe there's an answer to it. You know, I've seen what down at the winery project, that fan that they've got for cooling their whatever, if, you know, this is sort of a storage facility's got any sort of a fan, again, Mr. Malloy mentioned the fans on the reefer truck, it's like that, it's going to kind of destroy that site. You know, the whole thing would be putting that, that project down there was to be on the river and to quiet and, it's a wild scenic river. Now, if it's going to be quiet and with not a lot of additional trucks coming in and out of there, fine, but if, I mean, if you're going to have, you know, condenser fans, more and more trucks, traffic, they're going to fix that bridge someday, so I'm guessing there's going to be more people trying to get, you know, across that bridge, and if you've got more trucks trying to block or blocking entrance, I don't know if it's fit. But I would have more concern for the noise thing than I would for, thank you.
Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to close the rezoning public hearing and open the variance public hearing.
So just an overview, we kind of discussed this a little earlier. The variance is for the shore land overlay setback. It requires a setback of 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark, which this project and this property itself cannot meet feasibly. Like I mentioned earlier, and you have in your packets, the variance that was approved in 1995, I believe, for an expansion on the west side of the building, and that had a 65-foot setback from the shore land overlay or in that district. So like I mentioned, a precedent has kind of been set for that setback being okay on this property, that 65-foot setback. And so that is what the variance would be for, is a shore land overlay setback.
Do we have any comments from the public in regards to the variance for the rear setback? Or I guess that would be, yeah, the rear setback, wouldn't it? Hearing no further comments, I'd like to close the public hearing for the variance, and that brings us to discussion item rezoning.
Do we have any indication if they're expecting a lot more truck traffic once, if this were to get built, or would it kind of be the same amount?
Patricia Green is here tonight from Rob Bistro, and maybe it would be helpful if Pat would give just an overview of what you expect operationally going forward in terms of at least truck traffic?
We would expect a bit more traffic as we are getting busier, but what we'll find more of is just larger loads in the present trucks that are picking up at our plant. And so also, as far as noise goes with a building, that would be, it really should not be much of a noise whatsoever. The trucks are, the trailer, reefer trailers are a bit, they are louder than an actual building that has the cooler units encompassed, so I hope that's helpful to understand. I hope I said it as succinctly as possible, but I would expect a little more traffic, but primarily larger loads in the present trucks.
Pat, if I could ask you quick, Pat, we talked about this. Richard's brought up before the concern of overnight truck parking. Are you aware of that? Is that something that, if it does occur, that you can restrict?
Well, I did, I did look into it, and I did hear, again, you know, we're not there all night, so it's, it's a little hard to disagree, but I, I'm under the impression that it's happened one time, and it was unusual that there would be a few of them or two of them lined up waiting for us to open. So like I said, I, I did look into it and I heard it did happen once, but very unusual.
If they fix that bridge, is that going to bother them getting back in there at all, do you think, because they're having barriers up out away from the bridge?
No, we certainly should have plenty of space for them to maneuver.
To another exhibit I'll show with regards to some of the questions that Jim raised. Go grab the ledger quick. That's, that's probably good. Here's, here's, this is the 1995 survey that was done when the building was expanded last time. And then in 2010, Dan, you were here, that might have been it, when we did a interim use permit, which allowed at that time Rob Bistro to occupy the building, the former Lawrence building, we issued an interim use permit at that point. But this was the original building, this was the 1995 addition in yellow. Here's the 30 by 45-foot addition that, that Sam mentioned. And Jim, to your question on floodplain, this is a 1995 survey, and I think conditions on the site probably have changed some since 1995, but a 790, 791 elevation is the floodplain, which is kind of down in this area. So it falls down to the river from this elevation down to the river. So we've asked Pat that if this project is going to go ahead, that is if the rezoning is approved and the variance is approved, we've asked Pat, as we would anybody, to make sure that we've got existing elevations on the ground to assure her and us that we're not in the floodplain. I don't believe that we are based even on the 1995 elevations, but we do want that verified. And then as Sam was mentioning, this issue of the setback of the shore land, back in 95, there was a variance given because it was closer than 75 feet, I think it was 65 feet was, was what was asked for. We just wanted to be sure here, if this is, new addition's going to be built here along this alignment, that we don't, because the river does kind of angle, you know, back up to the northeast some, we just want to make sure that if we're within that 75 feet, that we can handle it through a variance proceeding. It goes back to the ordinary high watermark, and I can't tell on the 1995 survey what elevation was used for that, so we just wanted to be sure on, on that as well. Better to be safe than sorry. But I'm pretty sure we're okay on the floodplain. The variance was given again back in, in 95 for the shore land. Issues of traffic, truck traffic and noise are probably the two that we continue to hear, not just tonight, but, but from others. So I think if this is going to go ahead, we want to make sure with Pat Green and Rob Bistro, like we would anyone else, even though this has been an industrial building since, I think, 1946, according to the county, when it started out as an industrial use, it's been in the neighborhood a long time, but we still want to be obviously respective of the neighbors, the residential neighbors as well. And if this is going to go ahead as an expansion, to be able to cooperate with Pat Green, which she's been very willing to do with us in the past on noise and, and truck traffic, is something that we should, would work towards. Any questions on this graphic at all? It maybe gives a little bit more detail than-
I spoke with Rich and Pat there a couple days ago, and she was informing me that the condensers, the fans are going to pass north, north into the other building, the sound.
So are we talking about the fan that's on the present trailer?
No, the fan that will be on the building cooling that particular section of the building, the new freezer, the new storage.
So that, the fan then-
Which way will the condenser blow?
Well, it would not go toward the river. It would go toward the building itself, because we have the, we already have a rack of, of fans, if you will, condensers.
So it's going to go the opposite side of the existing?
Yeah, it would not be facing the river. And, and, yeah, where, where the present rack of condensers are now would be added.
And then turned in the semi trailer would disappear?
Unless, most likely, but unless we add another condenser to that rack, again, it would be, the building would buffer, both buildings, the building of the new freezer and the present building would buffer the condensers where they are now.
Right. The trailer that's there now that's in question with the noise levels, that would, that would be gone, that would be removed from the premises?
Well, it can go away. I guess what I'm seeing is, you know, it's, we wouldn't leave the fan where it is, it would not, that's, that is going to go away. But we may keep the, the actual trailer there for, for storage, if we need additional dry storage. But that, but it won't, it's dry storage, not frozen storage. So there, that is going away, that sound.
What we've looked at there has been an accessory use since Rob Bistro arrived there. But again, to go back in time just briefly, we did a, an interim use permit, and at the time, we agreed to limit that permit to five years because we anticipated, sorry about this, we anticipated having the ordinance redone, and we were going to take care of our non-conforming uses in the residential business district. It gets confusing because this goes back to 1946, 1950s, when that industrial use was first established, and whatever it was permitted under at the time, I, I don't know. But 2006 was the period in time when the whole community zoning changed, and that created a considerable number of non-conforming uses throughout the community, including in the residential business district, including this particular use. So when Rob Bistro came along, came along with the Lawrence's initially, we said, we'll do an interim use permit for a limited industrial purpose. They operated for more than five years from 2010, and we haven't changed the ordinances yet for the entire residential business district. So that's why now what Sam and I are recommending is that we try to fix this zoning. If we're going to continue to have a limited industrial use in that location, we'd like to fix the zoning at this point for a limited industrial use, but that doesn't change anything else throughout the rest of the residential business district. So it gets a little bit confusing because of just the history of the land use itself and the zoning changes that have occurred there. But again, as a result of the 2006 citywide zoning, that's what's really created the non-conforming use here. Nothing had really changed in the building. It had been industrial, it's just that it went vacant before Pat showed up. Lawrence's were going to lose the grandfather clause for non-conformity. So when the building became vacant, when they built the new building in the industrial park, built a use permit, thinking five years from 2010, we'll have, we do allow trailers to be stored in the industrial district, we've allowed that. So this could continue technically as an accessory use to the primary business. What's Pat saying here is that it's no longer going to be used for refrigeration, so it handles the noise issue, but I think she's still looking for some storage capacity in the trailer itself. But that would be an accessory use to an industrial zone if the industrial zoning is changed, where this is rezone to industrial. We've let it go since, since 2010 because of the interim use permit. And if they weren't, if Pat wasn't going to expand, we'd still deal with, with the noise. Richard's been in several times in the last couple of years, talking with us about this, and we've been trying to find a way to, to address the noise issues in a way that he can get his concerns addressed, and we can work with Pat and the, and the business side of the ledger at the same time.
I don't have a winery type van here that's going to be waking people up in the middle of the night, quick and on off. I mean, this only thing that, that's fine, but I've seen that what's behind Mike's building and Altav hardware, and that would destroy the value of that building I'm putting up, and I don't know how people trust me if it's a van of that caliber. But go ahead with that, obviously, there apparently the city can't even want a winery, so how are they going to deal with this?
I don't have a problem with the variance, it's just like Rich was bringing up, the semis and the noise is the concerns by me.
Well, I guess my, my take on that would be probably be the reefer trailer, the way it is right now, they've got to keep things cold, and that's got a diesel motor that's got to run all the time to do that. Right?
So it's actually an electric, so it's one of the more quiet ones. And we've, we've been very sensitive to the neighbors' concerns from the beginning, actually, but we do have a business that we, you know, are, are running. And we actually did even try to, we built a sound barrier, which may have helped a little bit, but, you know, it's, it's not the best, but yes. But what I, what I understand, and gosh, I'm not, I'm not used to refrigeration, who could speak, you know, a lot more intelligently about this particular building, but I am under the impression that that, a building of that sort is more quiet than, than actually a reefer trailer with, with the condenser right on the outside of it, attached to it.
Could, is there any way Pat could get some specs from your manufacturer's on the decibel level?
I think so. I mean, I, I think we, we should do that because I think it's beautiful now. I could certainly contact John, he's been out, you know, a couple of times, and find out what the decibel level would be and where the best placement of the condenser could be to accommodate everybody.
Pat, the other condensers that are on the building now, are, are they in use? Are they yours?
Not all of them, but, but yes, there, there's a few of them in use.
Jim, can you ever hear those condensers, those fans?
I don't know. Yeah.
Well, you've been down there though, yeah?
Sure, the day was construction equipment going on.
Yeah, but they take a break, don't they?
You know, I honestly, I mean, nobody has said that, but, but, you know, that they've been able to hear from on the other side of, you know, the river. But, but again, if these condensers are going to be, this building would prob, would be the buffer, the way I understand it, of the condensers, because we have the existing building, condensers, new building. So that new building would buffer the condenser, the, you know, the sound that could put-
Hopefully.
Right, right.
Might have to put back, too.
Pat's saying is here's, there, the dock condition that exists there now on the east side of the building is here, so trucks on load- east side of the building is here. So trucks unloaded here. This is the new addition, the new refrigeration addition. And I think those condensers are back in this area now.
That's correct.
So it's, it's going to be buffered by this building in part as a result of that building being constructed. I think that's, that's Pat's point. I know that in 2010, when we did the interim use permit, and that was before the, the trailer that's there today, uh, we have not had any concerns or any suggestions to at least staff that there's been a noise issue there prior to that trailer.
Well, the thing is, is it, it's not, you know, I'm not saying it's busting my ear. It just never shuts off.
Well, yeah, no, I, no.
That's a big part, that's a big part of what's going to happen in the back. Well, like, his place here, when they got their decks out back, and they're sitting there out there at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, they're going to hear those things, I would say, you know, I would, I don't know.
So I think having those specs on the, on the decibels would, would be helpful. What we're trying to do on, on the economic development side is, is again, work with the neighborhood on, on the trailer that's, that's here with the noise coming, you know, to the north, the north end. We've been, Pat, working with Pat on that, and feeling that if there's going to be an addition, and it's going to be for refrigeration, that that could eliminate that trailer altogether, which we felt would be a good thing. Until we get the details, you know, on, on the building itself and the equipment, it's hard to know for sure what kind of noise impact there might be. And I think that is a useful suggestion to, to make sure that we're aware of that. Now, I've told Richard this 15 times, if he's heard it once, that noise, unless it rises to a certain decibel level under state law, is not hazardous, and it's not an enforceable noise. And I know that Sam's been in contact with MPCA, and, and we've been trying to gauge the noise from the existing trailer, and it's a nuisance. And if it's a noise nuisance or a neighborhood nuisance that's not noise, it's really difficult for the city to enforce those. And I understand from Richard's perspective, I can hear that too, both at the trailer and across the street, and I, and I wouldn't love it. But it doesn't rise to the level of being, uh, an enforceable decibel level under state law. It just doesn't. But I, I would say it, it can be a nuisance, nuisance. So noise is something, again, we go back to 1946, 1950s, and this building was there. Pat's expanding her business in a, in a location that from a land use perspective has been there for a long, long time, right, wrong, or indifferent. And the only reason we're even here tonight is that if, if Lawrence's would have kept using that facility for Lawrence Meats, would not have lost its non-conforming status that was created in 2006 by a decision of the city. Arguably, we've talked about this before, and it's not just Rob Bistro, the former Lawrence. We've got a lot of non-conformings over here, and these are sticky wickets for us because of what happened in 2006. And it would have been better for all of us if this would have been zoned at the time, or the decision would have been made at the time, what's going to happen with this property? What's going to happen with the malt house? What's going to happen with the gas station? What's going to happen to the feed lines, the feed mill? What's going to happen? But we have all of those non-conforming businesses that have been here, in some cases for 30 or 40 years or more. So we're going to have to have these conversations. We are.
Well, do we want to get some specs on the, uh, the fan or refrigeration unit? Table it for now?
I think without knowing what the sound's going to be like, because I, as well as your son, John, have to deal with what goes on with the winery, whether it was done legally or illegally. There's, there's no way that I'm ever going to okay anybody in the city ever having to deal with something like that. So the noise is definitely an issue. And Pat, you know, kudos to you for coming in here and trying to address this situation. Other people don't do that with the almighty dollar in front of it. But without knowing what the, what these decibel levels are going to be, um, I'm, um, I can't go with it at this point.
I guess I'm not completely convinced that the sound has anything to do with rezoning the property from residential business that was just kind of thrown at it to I-1. I, I don't think that's... But I don't know. Is it related?
No, in our, in our industrial districts, the two, the two type of districts that we have that allow industrial use, noise is referenced in both of them. And it has to be a managed outcome or result from industrial development, that if there are noise concerns, and Pat's been very willing to work with us, and as she mentioned, and Rich knows, that the attempt was made to help diffuse or minimize the noise that has been created by the trailer that's there. And that's not always done either. But it was done in this case. So there are requirements under the industrial zoning district for managing noise, managing traffic, managing sites, uh, managing accessory uses. All those things are, are dealt with in the, in the ordinance. But we don't have a, an unlimited right to simply enforce what we think we want to enforce. We don't. And so it's always going to require some cooperation from the landowners, which I know we've had from the beginning from Pat Green, which we appreciate. But we're going to have to find a way, if we're going to continue to allow a, a business to operate out of that location, in this case, a limited industry, we're going to have to find a way to, to deal with, with noise. I think Pat can probably deal with the truck traffic and, and manage that much more effectively than we can.
Honey, what a sore throat. He was a little horse.
Can I tell you a cat joke?
Just kittens.
Why couldn't the peli, wait?
Why was the basketball court all wet?
Why?
Because a parrot cat dribbling all over it.
Where'd the cows go on vacation?
New York.
Period, because there's no reason to do it if the zoning doesn't change. Or unless we extend the, the term of the, uh, limit, or the, uh, use permit that we issued in 2010.
Planning the right amount of food is hard. The Guesstimator makes it easy. Just tell it who's coming and what's for dinner. Then it tells you how much to make. And yes, it even plans for leftovers. Try it at savethefield.com.
I know. My air conditioner is loud. It just is. And I'm really glad the neighbor on that side doesn't seem to have that much of it.
Well, it might not be San Diego weather here today, but you play baseball no matter the conditions unless torrential downpour. And St. Paul Saints and Fargo Morehead Redhawks, as George Sammis has famously told me over the years, both teams have to play in the same conditions. So nobody's got an advantage just because it's drizzling or sprinkling or the field is not in the most optimum conditions. And with that, let's give you the Ginkgo Coffee starting lineup for the visitors, the Fargo Morehead Redhawks. Brendan Metzger will lead it off in left. Batting second, the second baseman, Michael Gonzalez. Devin Ahart bats third. He's in center. Batting fourth, the designated hitter, Kieri De La Cruz. Leobaldo Pina will bat fifth. He's at first. Batting sixth, the third baseman, Tommy Mendoza. Joe De Luca bats seventh. He's behind the plate. Batting eighth, the shortstop, Yochon Medina. And Tim Caldwell will bat ninth. He's in right. They will face the hard-throwing right-hander, Vinny Nattoli. Ginkgo Coffee, St. Paul, Minnesota local, independent, distinctive. The starter for the St. Paul Saints is the right-hander, Vinny Nattoli.
And Nattoli, since coming into the starting rotation at the beginning of the season, has absolutely been fantastic. Over his four games this year, three-on-one record, 2.02 ERA, including just one earned run allowed in each of his two last starts, eight strikeouts in those two as well, 32 total on the season, as this young man, at the ripe age of 27, has established himself here in the American Association.
Let's give you the Dark Portable Storage Defense behind Nattoli tonight. Here it is. Brady Shoemaker at first, Josh Allen at second, Dante Bichette Jr. At third, the shortstop is J.J. Gould, left to right in the outfield. Jace Boyd, Kess Carter, Max Murphy behind the plate, Justin O'Connor on the mound is Nattoli. Dark Portable Storage is the right choice for your portable storage and moving needs. They always offer competitive prices, professional service and quality containers, commercial and residential rentals available, fast, easy, and affordable. The best service, the best price. Call Dark Portable Storage today at 651-688-8822. Vinny Nattoli on the mound. His first pitch, and the fastball over for a called strike. And it's no balls and one strike. Brendan Metzger, 258, couple of homers and six runs batted in. Metzger, last year, played for Sonoma. The fastball caught the inside corner for a strike. It's no balls and two strikes. A lot of these guys, though, for the Redhawks, played on this team a year ago. A lot of talent. Metzger, no... As this one popped up, foul territory. That's going to get out of play. Though stranger to the American Association, he played in the American Association in 2016 with Gary and Laredo. Last year, though, with Sonoma in the Pacific League, he swiped 20 bases.
You know, bring in a, a little fan and have it sound similar to what, uh, you know...
Run wild last year. The O2 to Metzger. Fouled the fastball back at 94. And the count stays, no balls and two strikes. This is the best hitting team that the Saints have faced.
Well, I'm sure he can get it from the company that makes them so, yeah.
By way of batting average. Too early in the season when they face the Railcats to really talk about their hitting. Here's the O2 pitch. Fouled off right side, out of play. Count stays on, too.
How does that work?
But they are fifth in the league, are the Redhawks, at 274. By numbers, it is the best. They have faced a lot of the bottom feeders. Over the course of the season, Texas, Sioux Falls, Chicago, Cleburne, Wichita, all at the bottom. The O2. Changed swing and a miss. Down on strikes he goes. Went up in the zone, up and away. And after throwing him nothing but fastballs, changed speeds, got him swinging for out number one.
That's what Vinny Nattoli's going to do. He's going to go right at these guys. You can see that breaking ball, tight spin. No chance right there for Brendan Metzger. Strikeout number 17 on the season for the leadoff man.
And that's your Preferred One instant replay. What does it take to achieve your best health? Let Preferred One help with health benefit plans for employers in St. Paul and throughout Minnesota. Preferred One, proud sponsor. St. Paul Saints baseball. The first pitch to Michael Gonzalez. It's a fastball in the inside corner for a strike. 0-1. Gonzalez, 325, a homer and four runs batted in. Last year with Cleburne, he's a fastball a little bit low for a ball. One ball, one strike. Vinny Nattoli, the hard-throwing right-hander. And he has been tremendous this year. This one lined sharply, but a backhanded grab by the third baseman, Dante Bichette Jr. He was playing in, about to step off the grass. And the catch for out number two. Two away. Going to bring up Devin Ahart.
An easy play there by Bichette Jr. So we take a look at the Preferred One replay. Right on the edge of the grass, past even with the bag at third.
Now here is Ahart. First pitch to him. It's a fastball on the inside corner for a strike. Ahart, 333, three homers and 11 RBI. Be interesting to see, again, with this being the best hitting team they've faced, how they're able to handle the fastball of Vinny Nattoli. He's 94 miles an hour. Over for a strike. 0-2.
Not a consistent 94. And he's going to be there all game long for as many innings as he's tasked with today. That fastball's going to be up there.
This one skied in the air towards center. Carter's got a late look at it. Now he'll move over to left center with the wind blowing that way. He'll make the catch, and it's a one, two, three, first. The Saints retire the side in order. Go to the bottom of the first. Redhawks, nothing. Saints coming up. You're tuned into Saints baseball on the Saints Broadcast Network.
What do you think you're doing, Kevin?
Uh, was just going to drive home.
Ah, ah, there are several warning signs present that you shouldn't be driving.
Like hearing voices?
Like your text-toemoji ratio?
Oh, man. The selfies.
Selfie, nailed it. We all have warning signs that let us know that we're probably not okay to drive. Mine is pretending to be your subconscious.
Craig, come on, man. Let's put a ride home.
I don't have a good standard or a good thought of, well, how do we do this? Again, noise and lesser rights, certain decibels, they can use this.
Did you know parking over tall, dry grass can spark a wildfire?
Only you can prevent wildfires.
Bottom of the first. Redhawks fail to get on the board in the top half. Saints have now done that in four consecutive first innings, retired the side in order. Let's give you the Ginkgo Coffee starting lineup for the St. Paul Saints. Josh Allen will lead it off at second. Batting second in right, Max Murphy. Noah Perio Jr. bats third. He's the designated hitter. Batting fourth at first, Brady Shoemaker. Dante Bichette Jr. bats fifth. He's at third. Batting sixth in left is Jace Boyd. Kess Carter bats seventh. He's in center. Batting eighth, the catcher, Justin O'Connor. J.J. Gould bats ninth. He's at short. They face the left-hander, Will Solomon. Ginkgo Coffee, St. Paul, Minnesota local, independent, distinctive. Redhawks, they will counter with a pretty good left-hander. It is Will Solomon.
And the left-hander, the former 2016, 38th round draft selection by the San Diego Padres. Thus far this season, one and three with a 4.5 ERA, 22 innings, 15 strikeouts. Has been roughed up over his last couple of starts, though. 0-2 in his two previous starts. Been tagged for seven earned runs.
And an industrial one.
Josh Allen will lead it off. 333, couple of homers, eight RBI. He of the 11-game hit streak. First pitch and a fastball over for a called strike, and it's no balls, one strike.
The way it's currently zoned, we don't have anything we could probably do.
We fall back onto our code of ordinances as a nuisance. I mean, we have in our zoning ordinance some generic general standards that reflect state law that say, if you exceed state law limitations in noise, it's an enforceable violation. That's kind of what it says. I mean, it's a paragraph. So when we get into the, the industrial zone and the limited industrial zone, we talk a little bit more with our standards about noise. And offensive orders and dust and truck traffic, and I mean, all those things come back in under the, under the limited industrial district, which don't necessarily apply as directly or as stated in the ordinance like they do in the residential business district. So we're probably a step ahead in terms of enforceability. But there's not a standard there that, that sets a minimum requirement for noise. So I don't, I mean, the question, John, to you, the answer, because I don't know because the applicant's going to have to take that message and that information and decide, like any applicant would, do they want to go ahead and, and spend probably a fair amount of money to design plans and specs in a mechanical system in the hopes that you can come back then to the planning commission, city council, and secure the rezoning that would be needed in order to allow the project to go ahead. It really is chicken and egg. I would challenge that. I mean, make a call to the refrigeration people, say, oh, come on, this big building, this big system, this noise. Oh, does that cost money?
No, it's, it's easy enough to get, Jim, a month from now. Because, because this commission meets once a month. What I would suggest, if you want to do it that way, if you want to take Jim's suggestion, which is fine, and you feel comfortable with the land use, you could make the recommendation subject to Pat doing that to the city council. City council's got to meet twice if they're going to rezone this property. So it could be a requirement. If you want to make it as such, you're recommending that Pat Green, the applicant in this case, gets the information that Jim's suggesting, whether it can happen before next Tuesday's council, if this is the schedule that the commission goes on.
Whether it can happen before next Tuesday's council, if this is the schedule that the commission goes on, is unknown. But if you make the recommendation on noise, the council could still conduct the first reading of the ordinance. Then they're not going to hear it again for two weeks after. So I would say if you're going to condition it on that from a timing perspective, Jim, I would suggest you make that recommendation. We've done this in the past because the council's got two readings, two meetings for rezoning. So that's a month. If we wait and have Pat do that now, we're not back until July 9th, I think, with this group. That's where the month comes, not to get the information. But you can condition it if you feel that's what you want to do. That's your choice.
Pat, are you in a, like a, you know, hurry to get this going?
Yep, we are. We're very short on freezer space. It's nothing uncommon when you're in a frozen food business. And I believe that we can do something to see to, you know, we can just see to it that... Absolutely, there are no guarantees that there will be no sound. But within reason, we can, we will do what we can to... Whether it's an upgraded condenser, whether, you know, I mean, without going, without making it, you know, unrealistic to achieve because of finances. We're responsible. We would certainly do what we can do to be responsible neighbors. We've done it on a smaller basis. We will do it on a larger basis. But again, you know, we need the space to continue to grow, to bring Cannon Falls more jobs and produce more product with Ferndale turkeys and Thousand Hills beef. And I guess that's about all I can say. But again, we've always been and will be responsible business owners.
I would make a motion, we adopt the rezoning and based on what Dave said, that there's something there with noise.
And make a conditional recommendation to make sure that Pat Green provides evidence or assurance ultimately to the city council before they would complete review of your recommendation, that there's, that noise is addressed. That's your...
That would be the motion I would propose.
I thought back in 2010, when Reister first came, that noise was an issue at that time.
I don't know if the noise was an issue in 2010, at least with regards to the interim use permit, because we had a public hearing then. But operationally, you'd remember better than I, operationally, I think it was several years after when the current trailer came and the noise became an issue, at least for you. I mean, I hadn't heard anything before that.
Does this seem like I've ever heard something about that?
I'd like to actually second that rezoning. That particular building is, it's an industrial building. It was built as an industrial building. I don't really see another use for that property without some massive investment. I think it's probably going to be staying industrial.
Well, as long as the noise issue was addressed and possibly the truck issue too.
Trucking as well as the noise. That situation here, both of those could be addressed.
Well, I've got a motion by Geelindo and a second by myself. All in favor of rezoning to industrial one? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
With conditions?
Well, yeah, that's what he had said.
What's the whole motion?
Yeah. Let's get the motion.
Recommending that the application to rezone from the residential business district to the limited industrial district be approved, subject to the applicant providing evidence that, or at least evidence and information specifying the noise implications of the proposed project to the city council to their satisfaction before they complete the second reading of the ordinance to rezone. So it would go to the council. This recommendation will go to the council next Tuesday. If the council chose to adopt your recommendation, it wouldn't go to them for a second reading until such time as we got further information back from Pat and her contractor and perhaps the equipment provider that gives us more detail about the noise. Once we have that, then that would go back to the city council and they would have to make a decision. Is that sufficient? Does that address the concerns of the neighborhood? Does it address the condition of the planning commission and their recommendation related to noise? That's the noise. Now Mike's added the trucks. And I don't know if that's...
Truck schedule of some sort?
If you had an operational plan, Pat, that you could provide. And we've received this from some other business in the past where a business will say, here's our anticipated delivery and distribution schedules for trucking. This is kind of what we think. And the main thing that we have had in those operational plans is limitations on hours and parking. You know, trucks as they are coming in and out of sites like this. So we could get an operational plan from Pat on that.
Well, this came up with the winery proposal. We didn't want semis in there at 8 o'clock on a Saturday night.
Right. And to the extent that that project comes back, I know that's still in the minutes, still in the record. And if the winery does come back with their request for conditional use permit, I suspect that language is going to continue to stay in there as well. So it's a, this isn't precedent setting to have that type of operational plan. And then what we do, Pat, is we monitor so that Rich knows, as an example, if three years from now, there's a truck there at 2:00 a.m. and we've got an operational plan that you submitted to us that says that that's not going to happen or you're going to do what you can to prevent it from happening. And it does happen, we've got the ability. It's a little bit simpler for us to work cooperatively with the owners for that type of enforcement.
I understand that, David. However, you know, we don't have 100% control over what the truckers do. We will certainly, you know, set the standards and know what our expectations are and so on. But, you know, that is what we can do. And what happens from there on, I mean, what I'm seeing is I don't see where we can take 100% responsibility for it.
Right. You're going to be a...
But we can certainly set the limitations and the expectations and what the neighborhood, what we, you know, what the rules are. But there's nobody there, of course, during the middle of the night.
And that would be a situation, Pat, where if a delivery did come, that we would have, prior to that, agreed that that's not going to happen. It may not be in your control, but what would be in your control and our control is if it became an issue again, that that particular trucking outfit, we'd have to work with them to park off-site somewhere so that they're not sitting on Cannon Street waiting all night for you to open the doors. So those things, I think, we can control. And we've done some of that in the past with businesses. So it's not perfect, but it's better.
Sure. Can you reiterate then what the time process is here that you're referring to now?
Based on Glenn's motion seconded by Dan, it would be a conditional recommendation on the rezoning to proceed with the rezoning to limited industrial. That would go to the city council next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. The council would conduct a first reading of that ordinance, or they could be asked to conduct the first reading of that ordinance to rezone. They would be aware of the condition of the noise. If that could be answered between now and next Tuesday, great. If it couldn't be answered between now and next Tuesday, the council would have a second reading, has to have a second reading of the ordinance to rezone, and that wouldn't happen until July 3rd. So potentially with that recommendation, it could be addressed between today and a week from tomorrow. But if it weren't, there'd be another two weeks there. And if it wasn't available by then, we simply wouldn't schedule it for a second reading before the council until it became available. So we kind of hold you hostage a little bit to make sure that the council gets that information. Based on this recommendation, gets that information before they conduct the second reading. Once the second reading of the ordinance to rezone is done, you've got the zoning. We publish it, but you more or less have the zoning. But it takes two meetings of the council.
So if John, if John Reister says, okay, well, this particular unit is so many decibels, will that mean something to us? Will we be able to, I mean, that's my...
Right.
You know, what I'm just a concern is, will the information he gives us mean a lot to us?
Well, that, I think, Pat, and the fact that you would be willing to do your best to correct the sound issue in the future if for some reason you had, we have this echo effect or it's louder than what the demo was.
I hope I've been clear that we absolutely would. The last thing we want are a bunch of unhappy neighbors. You know, so, and there, I know there are different things that you can do in the way of, just different things. I know there's sound panels and different things, but I, I don't know. I guess maybe I'm just being optimistic, but from what I have heard and what Mr. John Reister said is it's not going to be a nuisance, a terribly sound nuisance. But, you know, I mean, that's, I don't have anything else.
I have to apologize, Pat. I'm a little gun shy on that issue.
I wish I could stand up and make the sound, but it would, it's going to make a sound and then we know. But I'll certainly look into it and see what information he might be able to bring to the table to ease concerns. But I mean, even a, I mean, this is, again, I don't, even a sound barrier fence, which there are many of them out there, you know, would also make a difference. But it's not my expertise. I mean, you know, I wish it were, but it's not. So I can't talk definitively about it. But I do know of those kind of sound barriers out there, whether it's for air conditioners, whether it's for building sites where there's an awful lot of sound. There are sound barrier fences that are available.
And I think when we see the actual, or at least the next level of plans from the equipment provider, the mechanical engineer for the addition itself, we get an idea of where are the units going to be placed and make a judgment on not only the level of the noise, but also the direction of the noise. And try to figure out cooperatively, I hope, with Pat and the neighbor to the north and the neighbor to the southeast, that we find a way to comfortably manage or diffuse or substantially eliminate noise and the direction that the noise is traveling. Now, there's not, if you look at the, if you look east of this project, if the noise, to the extent there is noise, is directed east, there's no real impacted neighbor to the east. There is to the southeast across the river in the three new townhomes, but directly east, there isn't. If we're going south, there's some, but there's obviously the river there. Going north is back, you know, back to Rich. But we've just got to see what the mechanical design is and what the equipment provider and the equipment engineers tell Pat, tell us about. This is where they're going to be. This is the size they're going to be. This is the noise they're going to be. And if you wanted to make less noise in that, here's idea A and B. And we find out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to go from, you know, from zero to 60 right here, sitting here, when in fact, we may not have to go anywhere. It may be a very quiet and well-insulated building, more quiet than what's out there now.
And that's why we've been encouraged, Sam and I, about the potential of the addition relative to noise. And Rich has been real patient with us on this. That was, we've been working with Pat, particularly in the last month and a half on this project, that if we collectively can get rid of the existing trailer noise, that's going a long ways. And intuitively, I feel that the new equipment is going to be much more likely to reduce or minimize noise than what we've got with that existing trailer. That's not the newest piece of equipment there. And Pat has been working with us the last half a year or more on different alternatives. And Rich has been here suggesting different things too on how we work together to handle this noise situation. So I think the addition, to the extent that it goes ahead, I am optimistic and hopeful that that solves our main concern with regards to neighborhood noise. But we have to see the details.
Would you read that motion again? What Glenn's, or Glenn's motion?
Well, I guess, I guess the simplest thing would be to say that we pass the rezoning ordinance with some kind of noise...
Condition.
Condition. Basically all it needs, right?
Right.
And trucks? Well, and trucks, but she's been working with us and she said that the trucks are going to be loaded a little heavier and have more stuff in the trucks. So it's probably not a lot more truck traffic. But I guess if you could say something about that to the council also, you know, just so we know there's not going to be a lot more truck traffic.
In the I-1 district, actually, I went and got my copy of the ordinance here. It does say that for this use, there cannot be large generation of volumes of traffic due to a specific use. So that's directly in the ordinance. If it were to be violated, if we were to get a complaint on the number of trucks coming in, it would be a violation of the ordinance and they would have to correct that issue. So it is right here in the ordinance that large volumes of traffic are prohibited in the I-1 district.
Do we know what large volumes constitute?
Um, it's not a direct number or anything.
I think the point here on the limited industrial, we've got the two districts. We've got the general industrial district, which is more the industrial park. And while there's still controls there, there's a lot more intensity in terms of what's allowable for land use in the industrial park than there is in the limited industrial district. So there's still some subjectivity in terms of enforcement. But we felt that the limited industrial district under our ordinance was a better fit because it does have standards that force applicant, force the city, force you folks as advisors to the council and the council to make sure that in a limited industrial district, that if there are impacts being created by the use, by the industrial or the business use, and that they are limited and that they're more enforceable. So it's a softer industrial district in our zoning ordinance. I will say that. But there isn't quantified, Pat, so again, it's one of those, you know it's a problem when you see it. And if we see it, Rich sees it, Jim Altough sees it, folks who buy the townhouse see it, we hear about it. You know, and not just from those two, other parts of the community, we will hear about that and we investigate. And if it's a concern and a problem and something that has to be enforced and can be enforced, we do.
And you're primarily talking about after hours and...
Yeah, and like I say, unless we turn a totally different direction here, at least for the last 10 years that I've been here, and say, we want to zone out these uses in the residential business district. We no longer want business. We no longer... the residential business district, we no longer want business, we no longer want industry, we no longer want anything other than residential development in this large residential business district, we've got some challenges ahead of us beyond just this one. We've kind of chosen to try to fix these situations as best we can, knowing that there's more problems trying to fix the whole residential business district through zoning than there is if we can try to work cooperatively with our existing or longstanding uses, be it residential or business commercial.
Well, let's complete the vote.
Complete the vote? All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Gee Lindell and a second by myself to rezone to I-1 with conditions of truck traffic and sound. All in favor? Aye. That resolution passes. And that brings us to the variance. The variance...
I make emotionally approve the variance.
I've got a motion by Mr. Altough.
A second.
And a second by Dee Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Planning Commission member comments.
Nothing on the winery yet.
Nothing to report on that at the time.
Anybody got anything? Hearing none, that brings us to number nine, which is adjourned.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Altough and a second by Gee Lindell. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the Monday, June 11th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.